I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Pastor Sean McCullough, if you would please lead us. Come forward to the microphone.
Thank you guys for having me back. I trust you've been having fun figuring out all the 911 stuff I got to hear about last time this year, so I hope you guys will pray with me. Lord, we just thank you for today. God, we just thank you that you've given us breath. God, that you've caused your son to shine. Lord, I just pray for vision, that you would guide us with all the decisions that are made today will be made tomorrow. God, I pray we would treat each other with more love and seeking understanding, that we would become more neighborly in partnering with one another as we just partner with you in this project that you've called Your Creation, just bringing it to look more like heaven every single day. So, we love you, we worship you, pray all these things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit that moves today. Amen.
Thank you. Keeping in mind that today is Flag Day, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? If you push your button.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
With that, next issue on the agenda is public comments. Are there any members of the public who would care to comment on any items? If so, I would remind any citizens who would care to comment, when they come up to the dais, make sure that the button is pushed and the green light is on the collar. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name, and then whatever comments you care to make. Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are three items on this evening's agenda. Resolution 2023-192 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from May 25th to June 8th for 650 invoices totaling $1,097,334.86. Resolution 2023-190, approving sole source vendor and agreement with Aztec Systems LLC, a Trimble company for the highway asset work management and P&amp;Z permitting software. And Resolution 2023-196, approving a work zone enforcement program order between the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the Clay County Sheriff's Office.
With that, is there a motion related to our consent agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of tonight's consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-193. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-193 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from May 25th to June 8th for 13 invoices totaling $3,427.51.
Is, are there any questions of the administrator on this issue? Very well. Is there a motion regarding 2023-193? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-193.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-193. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes five in favor, one recusal.
Next item on our regular agenda is 2023 Ordinance 16. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 16 is the reappropriation and revision to the current adopted budget and the amount of $13,500 for the court diversion grant program. Dr. Terry Hargrave from Court is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good evening. I'm not used to seeing you all at 6 o'clock, so it's nice to see you. Dr. Terry Hargrave, Director of the Office of Dispute Resolution. This is amended from our previous grant. I asked for an additional $13,500 to get us through emotional mayhem. It's a new class we offer for kids, understand their emotions, triggers, how to cope with those. We are doing a new youth drug education class, which we are working on, a parenting class. Five of us are getting trained on Girl Circle. We were able to do another session of Mother Daughter Circle and for youth to do their community service hours and for those victims to get paid restitution. So, that's what this money would go for.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Move to approve 2023 Ordinance 16.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 16. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to the next item, 2023-195. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-195 is a consideration of a request for a transfer within a fund in the amount of totals $50,000 from the sheriff's fund, and Captain Agdarion is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commission. Captain Amy Agdarion, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request for a transfer within the law enforcement tax fund in the total amount of $50,000 that has been identified by working with the auditor in budgeted position lines that are either part-time, that we are not filling, or positions that are not fully funded due to various reasons that we would like to move to a seasonal line item because we have a critical shortage in dispatch, and we've kind of talked about that this year. We've got eight total positions, and currently we have four full-time employees in those positions, including one supervisor, and three of those people are in various stages of training. So, we have been able to fill the 24/7 operation by bringing in temporary workers. There's about nine of them, but currently those nine people are sitting in full-time positions that we will need to open up as we hire more dispatchers. And there are about five dispatchers in the hiring process right now in various stages of background and whatnot. So, as we hire those people on full-time, we have to have a position to put them in, but we'd like to keep these seasonal part-time employees that have dispatch experience until we get everybody else up to speed.
Are there any comments or questions of the captain? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-197? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve 2023-195.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-197?
195.
195. I'm sorry, you're right. I got the wrong one out there. Thank you for the correction. Any discussion? For the discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Now, I believe we can move on to 2023-197, along with 198 and 199, which are companion issues. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you. Resolution 2023-197, 198, and 199 are companion resolutions for the consideration of rezoning the final plat and a vacation of utility easement for the Saksbury Acres subdivision. And Director Jones is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So, this is Saksbury Acres. It's a rezoning final and utility easement vacation. You can see the property as it exists now. It's roughly 21 acres. It's two lots. One lot's indicated in blue, one in purple. It was platted in 1987 as part of the Millen subdivision, and it's currently zoned agricultural. What's being proposed is basically just a lot line adjustment. You probably noticed that that previous lot line went through the pond. This lot line adjustment would move the property line to the north where a property line is not going through the pond and create two lots. So, we started with two lots, ending up with two lots. They're roughly the same size. One is 10 acres, one is 11 acres. They would be rezoned to R1, which is our standard for lots that are greater than 10 but less than 20. And then where that yellow line is, is where the utility easement runs through the pond as well. That would be vacated, and we would put new utility easements on the new property lines. The comp plan indicates this is in the urban services tier. That guides us that 10-plus acre lots with agricultural land preservations are acceptable for this area, which is what they're proposing. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that the five rezoning criteria have been addressed. Here is the surrounding area. The lot is in blue there. City of Kansas City noted in red to the south, and A Highway to the east. You can see this is an area that has a lot of ag zoning still, but then in the yellow and orange, there's a lot of R1 and R1A, which are lots anywhere from 3 acres to up to 10 acres. So, we believe the 10 to 11 acre lots meet the surrounding area. We received no opposition for this case. We did the public notice requirements, which included 25 certified letters, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval with two conditions. One of those conditions is a request from Highway Department that the culvert be either replaced or cleaned out as it is silted or full of silt, and just some minor changes to the recording copy of the plats. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have. I don't think my applicant is present.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, if there's no discussion, I'll move to approve and mark whatever boxes need to be checked as approved for 2023-197, 2023-198, and 2023-199.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-197, 198, and 199 with any boxes that require to be marked, marked approved. With that, further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next item on our regular agenda is also a combination, 2023-200, 2023-201. Administrator?
Resolutions 2023-200 and 2023-201 is the consideration of the preliminary and final plats for K&amp;D Acres subdivision, and Director Jones is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So, this is the preliminary final plat. You see it on the screen. It's outlined or highlighted in red. It's approximately 50 acres. It's unplatted, and it's currently zoned agricultural. The proposal is to divide it into two lots, one noted in purple, one in red. All of the road frontage would go with the purple lot, and the red lot would be served by a 60-foot wide access easement that we would require a shared agreement be recorded with the final plat. This is located in the rural low-density tier. In any of the three tiers in unincorporated Clay County, 20-plus acre lots are acceptable. No agricultural land preservation is required for a 20-plus acre lot, so we're not rezoning this one, and this one is not within a mile of any city, so we did not reach out to any city for comments. Here is the lot in red. To the north is Clinton County, so it butts up against the Clinton County line, I-35 to the west, and City of Holt to the kind of west as well, just west of I-35. You see, this area is largely agricultural still, so we're dividing this into two lots, stays zoned to ag, so we feel this meets the surrounding area. Received no opposition for this case, sent a total of five letters, no objections from outside agencies, and Planning and Zoning voted eight to zero to recommend approval with two minor changes or conditions. One is the shared access easement, and then some minor changes to the plat. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant had something come up at the last minute is not present.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-200 and 2023-201?
Yes, move to approve 2023-200 and 2023-201 with all boxes marked as approved.
Motion has been made for approval, 2023-200 and 2021, with the appropriate boxes marked approved. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda are two companion items, 2023-202 and 2023-203. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-202 and Resolution 2023-203 are companion resolutions regarding the consideration of the preliminary and final plats for the Hilton Family Homestead subdivision, and Director Jones is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So, very similar to the previous case we just heard. This one is highlighted in blue, approximately 45 acres, unplatted, again zoned ag. Proposal is to divide it into the two lots. They'd both be 20-plus acres, could remain zoned ag. Again, MoDOT has recommended a shared access. It's noted in yellow. There is floodplain on this property noted in blue, but both build sites are located outside the floodplain. And again, we're subdividing these lots to allow for one single family home per lot. There is a blue line stream within that floodplain where there would be a 75-foot setback from the center line of that stream that basically becomes a no-build zone. This property is located in the natural resources tier because it's pretty close to Smithville Lake, and again, any tier, a 20-plus acre lot, is relevant or allowed. Here is the subject property. You can see Smithville Lake to the north, E Highway that runs in front of it, and this is a unique area. You can see, there's still a lot of ag zoning, but all of the, most of the yellow and orange areas are subdivisions that have happened over the past 10 or 12 years, divided a lot of properties in this area from, to 5 to 10 acre lots. So, going with 20, we feel this meets the surrounding area as well. No opposition for this case, sent a total of 22 letters, and Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval with two conditions, which again is the shared access agreement and some changes to the recording copies of the plat. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and I don't think the applicant's present.
Are there any questions of Mr. Jones? Seeing none, is there a motion related to these two issues? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve 2023-202 and 2023-203 with boxes marked approved.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-202 and 2023 with the appropriate boxes marked approved. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda this evening is 2023-204, 2025, and 2026, which are companion issues. Administrator?
Resolutions 2023-204, 2025, and 2026 are companion resolutions for the consideration of rezoning the preliminary and final plats for Petty Estates subdivision, and Director Jones will provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So, this parcel is highlighted in blue. It's approximately 112 acres. You can see I-35 just to the west. It's currently zoned ag. The proposal is to just create one 5.36 acre lot around the existing house on the property. The rest of the acreage would remain unplatted. So, we're talking about one lot in this instance. It has access off of 116th Street. This parcel is located in the urban services tier. Now, that tier guides us that we should be doing 10-plus acres. However, there is an exemption for properties that are within a mile of the city if that city grants an exemption. In this case, City of Liberty responded that they felt that the five-acre lot matched the surrounding area, so we used that exemption. Both staff and planning and zoning felt the five rezoning criteria had been addressed. Here is the lot that we're talking about, the 112 acres. You can see Liberty just across the street. That was actually annexed in and is part of a proposed commercial industrial development for the City of Liberty. And you can see City of Carney is not too far to the north with I-35 just to the west. So, this is a, with it being so close to both Liberty and Carney, it's, you can see it's highly developed. There's quite a few interior-streated subdivisions in this area, and with the approval from Liberty, both staff and planning and zoning felt it met the criteria. No opposition was received for this case. We sent a total of 23 letters, and Planning and Zoning voted eight to zero to recommend approval with two conditions. Again, Highway requested a culvert be replaced or repaired, and then some changes to the recording copies of the plat. I would be happy to answer any questions, and I don't think the applicant is present.
I think we have certainly a question from Commissioner Withington. Please proceed.
Did you say that that had been annexed, or it was going to be annexed by Liberty?
The, everything in red is within Liberty, so it...
Okay, I must have misunderstood. So, this is not, is this in their annexation plan?
It may be in their annexation plan, but it is unincorporated Clay at this point.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I'm just curious what, you know, the house is already there, the lot, you know, is already there. I'm trying to understand sort of what the purpose of doing the five-acre rezone is.
I believe there is a trust involved, and they're dividing the land amongst children, and the house is going with one son, and the acreage is going with another son.
Understood. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? And you said the applicant was not present, as far as you know?
No.
Very good. With that, is there a motion related to these three items? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve 2023-204, 2025, and 2006 with all boxes checked as approved.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-204, 2025, excuse me, and 2006 with the boxes, appropriate boxes marked approved. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is another group of three companion items. That would be 2023-207, 2028, and 2009. Administrator?
Resolutions 2023-207, 208, and 2009 are in consideration of rezoning preliminary and final plat for Sampson Meadow subdivision, and Director Jones will provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So... Got this one pulled up on the screen. It's outlined in yellow, approximately 34 acres. It's currently zoned agricultural. It has access from Plattsburgh Road. The proposal is to divide it into two lots, one indicated in red, which is roughly a five-acre lot that would be rezoned to R5, as that's our current standard for lots that are five acres but less than 10. And then the rest of the acreage is approximately 28 acres, would remain zoned ag. There is floodplain on the property you see indicated in blue. There's a blue line stream within that floodplain, and for the blue lot, a variance was approved. So, the blue lot exceeds the county's width-to-depth ratio. So, whatever a lot's road frontage is, you take that number times four, and that's the maximum depth the lot can be. In this case, the blue lot exceeded that depth, and this case went in front of the border zoning adjustment, and they approved a variance for that width-to-depth ratio. It's located in the urban services tier, which again I said earlier is a 10-plus acre area. A city within one mile may review and recommend exceptions with the city addressed. I'll talk about that a bit here in a minute. So, with the surrounding area, there's the subject parcel. You can see City of Carney to the north and east, Liberty to the south and east, and Kansas City to the south and west. So, with this case, we reached out to Liberty and Carney, and this property was far enough outside their annexation areas that they both, basically both came back, no comments, didn't have any objections. But the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this area, and it's a highly developed area because you can see the City of Liberty, that's the property I pointed out that Commissioner Withington asked about. So, we're just to the west of the Petty Estates case that we discussed. So, this is an area that's got quite a few interior-streated subdivisions, smaller lots. Everything in the kind of bright yellow and orange is a 3 to 5 to 10 acre lot. And then there's lots as small as 10,000 to 12,000 square feet and acre lots in this area as well. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we'll talk about their vote in a second, but they believed it matched the surrounding area even though it didn't meet the 10-acre minimum, and they voted to approve. We did not receive any opposition for this case. We sent 23 certified letters, no objections from outside agencies, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to one to zero to recommend approval with four conditions. You can see three of the conditions up there. There is a building that is on the property line that would need to be demoed or moved, some changes to the recording copy of the plat, and then again, replacing or repairing a culvert. The applicant has agreed to these conditions, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Any questions of Mr. Jones? Seeing none, if the applicant is present, and they, did you say they were present?
Yes, sir.
If the applicant would like to come forward and give us any information, it is not required, but certainly we would welcome your comments. And please remember, speak into the microphone, state your name, and go from there.
Good evening. Brian Hookstown with MKEC Engineering.
And I'm Diane Sampson.
I think Kip kind of summed it up. We're just here to answer any questions that you guys may have regarding it, and if there are none.
Are there any questions of the applicants from the commission? Seeing none? There doesn't seem to be any, but thank you for being here. With that, is there a motion related to the three items that we just heard? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve 2023-207, 2023-208, and 2023-209, marking all appropriate boxes approved.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-207, 2028, and 2009 with the boxes Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-207, 208, and 209 with the boxes marked approved. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recog-, oh, excuse me, okay. Is there no further discussion? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 2023-210. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-210 is consideration of the final plat for the Willow Ranch subdivision, and Director Jones, this is his last topic for this evening, will provide information to the commission.
We will miss you when you are finished.
I don't think the county administrator will, though.
With that, please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So this case will probably look familiar. It's outlined in yellow. It's called Willow Ranch. It's zoned ag and R5 at this point. The rezoning and preliminary plat were approved by the county commission in September of 2022. This case involves infrastructure. That's why it's going through the process twice. So the proposal is to, you can see the little black cul-de-sac that will be stubbed in there as access for the four lots off that cul-de-sac. So it's to divide it from one lot to four lots. Lots range in size to five acres to over 26 acres, which is the one with the pond. The developer will be responsible for that infrastructure. Here is the surrounding area. You can see the lot in blue, City of Carney to the south and east, and I-35 to the east. It's, this area, you can see everything in yellow was developed in the 70s and 80s. It's a lot of interior streeted subdivisions with smaller lots to the north. Both staff and Planning and Zoning Commission felt this matched that area, and this wouldn't inhibit any future development as well. So approval criteria for a final plat, when it comes by itself, is staff and Planning and Zoning Commission basically check that final plat and make sure the developer hasn't made significant changes, increase the number of lots, things like that. We, both staff and P&amp;Z felt that this matched the, the preliminary plat. Now, this follows a little bit of a different process. Once the final plat is approved, that's when the developer can install the infrastructure. All the outside agencies inspect that infrastructure. Once it's approved, the developer can record the plat and sell the lots at that point, and the developer is responsible for maintaining that infrastructure for a two-year time period, which again, the county will inspect after that two-year period, and if it meets the county's requirements, it'll be accepted into the county system. We've received no opposition leading up to or during this case, sent a total of 34 letters, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to one to one to recommend approval with 11 conditions. The applicant has agreed to those conditions. This case has more conditions just because of the infrastructure that's involved. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners have, and the applicant is present as well.
Any questions of Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
So that cul-de-sac that they're putting in there, that becomes, that's private property, that becomes public? Public cul-de-sac?
Yes. It'll be right-of-way. The developer will be responsible for maintaining it for two years, and then that'll come before the commission to accept it into the county system, at which point the county is responsible for the maintenance.
So educate me on what, I'm ignorant to this. Why is that? Why doesn't it stay private? And they deal with it?
Um, well, so that's a good question. The current code doesn't really allow for private infrastructure. We, we have to be concerned about emergency access, things like that with private drives. It's always been, at least as long as I've been here, it's been the, our policy to have Highway Department review it, make comments if they can't maintain it. In this case, they did not make those comments, and that's why it's public infrastructure.
Okay. So that's, so we really don't have an option on that?
They, they could have that option, but it would involve variances with the current code.
Okay. I just, I just question taking on more infrastructure, more streets here when it only affects, what, four, four lots at, at the most, four households whose taxes certainly aren't going to be able to pay for the upkeep on that, that we're going to put into it. Does that make sense?
It does.
I just wonder why we do that. I don't know if anybody has any comments that knows why we do that. Just doesn't make sense to me, but I'll leave it at that.
And I guess I could answer that. From a planning perspective, the only way to divide this one would be to stub a street in there. Now, the, the discussion, I guess, could be had in the future, if that infrastructure should be private or public, but the only, really the only option with the current code to subdivide it would be to extend that infrastructure in there.
So-
Get next.
No.
I'm sorry. I missed that. There you go. You, there you are, back on.
Sorry. So my, my concern is obviously, we have, we have four, four lots, I'm going to just say four, four households. I don't know if there's been a household on those or not, but, but, but four lots that want, want street access there, but it's going to be the responsibility of all of the taxpayers to pay for this basically private cul-de-sac. And that's what it looks like to me. There's no other use for that street except for those four people that are going in and out of there. And that's why I just think it's, it's odd that we take that on as a, as a tax burden when it doesn't benefit any of the taxpayers except for the four lots there. That's just my comments.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate those comments because I think that's part of the issue we come up with anytime we're developing out into the county and, and delivering services. I guess my one comment to it is whether it's this route or had they sought a variance for, for a private road, I, I, I just want to put out there that those who ultimately buy those lots are expecting services of some kind, whether it's, if it's an emergency, they expect police or fire, sheriffs in this case, to, to come out there. So I, I'm not sure there's a, a perfect answer to this, other than at least if it is built to our code, then we know whoever does have to respond to it has a good road to go on. I think what my colleague brings up is, is a, is a larger question of development overall in the county, which frankly, I'm kind of hoping that comprehensive plan discussion kind of gets into, because there is that cost benefit to all this, and, and I, and I recognize that. So just wanted to make those comments that when the comprehensive plan gets into these sorts of discussions, I look forward to that conversation, because I think that's exactly where that comes in. Thank you.
Further comments or discussion? Seeing none. I'm sorry, did you say that applicant was present?
Yes, sir.
If the applicant would care to come forward and address the commission, they're certainly welcome to. Not a requirement, but please state your name and, and share your thoughts with us.
Good evening. Is it still on yet? Lindsey Vogt with Beaufort Engineering.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. With that, is there a motion? Let's see where we are. There we are. For 2023-210. Commissioner Wagner?
Move to approve 2023-210 with the appropriate box marked as approved.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-210 with the appropriate boxes marked approved. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
The next three items are grouped together. Is that correct, Administrator? Those would be 2023-211, 212, and 213. Please proceed.
Resolution 2023-211, 212, and 213 have been grouped together because they are companion resolutions. Resolution 2011 is approving the authorization to execute an agreement, the internal governmental support agreement with the United States government for the United States Army Reserve Child Care Pilot Program. Resolution 2023-212 is approving the authorization of executing an agreement, a service agreement with WE Care. And also, resolution 2023-213 is approving the auditor to create a Fund 348 to monitor the revenue received and the expenditures for the United States Army Reserve Child Care Pilot Program. As the commission will recall, last week during your business session, we had a discussion topic and presented to you all information about this program. That is a pilot program, and it is a public-public-private partnership between the United States government, Clay County, and the private carrier WE Care. The entitlement of the program is to provide childcare assistance for the Army Reserve and National Guard when our Army Reserves are called up for their weekend training, or National Guards when they are deployed, and also to assist with routine childcare. There is funding that is provided through the federal government, and we are partnering with them. There are no county dollars associated with this program. We're actually a conduit to help this program occur to benefit our military families, and it's eligible to those in the Army Reserve and National Guard in the Kansas City region, which actually encompasses 10 different counties in the area. Happy to answer any questions. We were directed by commission to bring this forward, to participate in the program.
Are there any comments or questions of the commissioners? Commissioner Wagner?
Ready to make a motion if there's no discussion.
If there's no further comment or no further question, I think we did cover this pretty thoroughly previously, but thank you for the good presentation. So yes, you're recognized for motion.
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-211, 2023-212, 2023-213.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-211, 212, and 213. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
That concludes our regular agenda, and I've got to say, I don't know that we've been through such a, a voluminous regular agenda in such, with such efficiency. So certainly appreciate all involved in, in that. That brings us to discussion items. The first item under discussion would be opioid settlement utilization. Administrator?
Thank you, commissioners. I'm sure as the commission is aware, it was not long ago that a number of states, counties, and cities have all joined together to basically approach the pharmacy, the distributors, and the retail businesses when it comes to helping us address the opioid crisis. The opioid crisis has certainly placed an enormous toll on communities across the country. In 2021, over 107,000 deaths occurred due to drug overdoses in the United States, and opioids were involved in 75% of those deaths. So in working with, through litigation, and to resolve the number of lawsuits, the settlement between both the pharmaceutical companies, the distributors, and the retail businesses is estimated to exceed approximately $50 billion to be shared across the country. To unlock part of that settlement, counties and cities had to surrender their individual lawsuits and basically join and sign on with their state agreements, which Clay County did in conjunction with the state of Missouri. Now, most of the settlement agreements with the pharmaceutical companies, and the distributors, and the retail businesses are distributing the settlements in over an 18-year period. They are also indicated that they are trying to front-load those payments where more money will be received in the early years of the settlement period. The first settlement was actually reached in 2021, and so the first finalized in 2022, with the first payments being received in September of 2022. So this chart shares with you the funds that Clay County has received to date. Now, that settlement that occurred in 2021 and was finalized in 2022 was with Johnson &amp; Johnson, and also with three big distributors, which you see here on the chart. We were informed that over that 18-year period, just for these agencies, the county would receive approximately $1.4 million. And so what you see on the chart is, we've actually received funding. We received funding for the first year and the second year last year in 2022, and we received $68,000 for year one from those agencies, and for year two, we received $94,000. So we currently have sitting in the fund $162,457.47. We are anticipated to receive our third-year payment from these agencies sometime this year. We have been notified on what that amount is, which would be a little over $85,000. So with just the first year of three pay, three years of payments from these agencies, the county will end up with sometime this year with $248,000. Now, it also is anticipated, we will receive additional money this year, because as I mentioned, not only is it these particular companies, but there are also the retailers and other pharmaceutical companies. So for example, information that I've reviewed, we should be receiving funding from CVS in June of this year, later this month. We should be receiving funding from Walmart in July of this year, and we should be receiving in August funding from Walgreens, Teva, and Allergan. So we don't know what those amounts will total. So, but we have a set, a separate fund aside for that, in which those funds are being placed. Now, as part of the settlement, it specifies what the funding can be used for as an agreement in, in these settlements. And so they're really into three specific types of categories. The first one is the treatment of the opioid crisis. Second category is in prevention. And then the third one, they're calling it other strategies. So it would be assisting with first responders. It's about training. It's about doing probably some research, and, you know, some are doing an environmental scan of their particular cities or counties. And so that kind of fits into the other category. So with those three categories, the settlements have gone on to say, these are some sort of approved strategies. So the first one is really trying to reverse opioid overdoses. So Narcan is one I think people are familiar with. And so that is an eligible strategy to use funds to buy Narcan, whether it's putting it in the school systems, or first responders, and the sheriff's department. Also is the medication-assisted treatment, helping with pregnant and postpartum women. There's also neonatal. There's treatment for incarcerated population, prevention programs, and so the list goes on. While each of the agencies have their own settlement documents, the majority of them fall in, in essence, with the same requirements and categories. But that is something that as we look at utilizing these funds, they must be in compliance with those settlement agreements. So one of the items that staff is proposing to the commission is to consider the creation of an opioid settlement task force. I'm only going to say that once because I'll get tongue-tied. And so, and part of the, the purpose of that is, this is an area that staff, this is not, we're not experts in this. And we certainly have partners and stakeholders in the community that can bring value to what is the best utilization of these funds to make the most largest impact in Clay County. So I put together for you, and it was in your packet, sort of a draft charter for your consideration for the task force. And what I have on the screen is basically what is the mission of this task force? And they're an advisory body. So they are, would be being, bringing to the commission a recommendation on what are the standards by which the funds would be spent, what are the specific projects to be funded, and what are those measurable outcomes to be monitored to see, are we moving the needle? Are we having an impact on the community? So the, the charter has their mission, and the charter also goes on to talk about what are the duties of the task force. So again, they would have goals and objectives. They'd have the standards of how the funds would be spent, what projects, and what are the measurable outcomes. They would be giving a recommendation to the commission. They would also be providing status reports to the commission, status on the project, status on the financial aspect, and also giving you information about the data on the measurable outcomes. So we put together some ideas with regard to the membership of the task force. Seven members is being recommended, two-year terms, not to exceed four complete successive terms. That would really, if it's an 18-year program, even though we've received three years for some, we'll get 18 for others. And so in essence, someone could serve basically half of the time. We're recommending that we have a member from the sheriff's office, a member from the Clay County Health Department, from the public health hospitals, from the school districts in Clay County, someone from the legal profession, someone in the treatment and recovery profession, and then someone from the emergency medical services would be our recommendation for the task force to bring that expertise together, the knowledge that they have of the challenges that we face here in the county, and make recommendations to the commission. The, the charter also goes on to talk about their operating procedures. So their meetings would be, excuse me, open to the public. They would have reports. They'd have amendments. They'd have agendas. They could have subcommittees, and they could have a chair and a vice chair to help operate the functionality of the task force. It also states in the charter that the task force would automatically terminate and disband when the final opioid settlement annual report is submitted to the commission. So that's kind of our recommendation of moving forward and starting to utilize and look at how do we use these funds in the community to make a difference and have an impact on the opioid situation in Clay County. So I stand for questions, recommendations, and direction by what the commission would like to do.
Okay, we will open it up for discussion. First up would be Senator, Commissioner Withington. I'm sorry. I don't know whether that's a promotion or a demotion. We'll just let that one go.
I got a promotion, Jay. No, I don't think I'd ever want to go down to Jeff City, so don't call me Senator, please. Hey, so who's going to make the, who's going to make the, appoint these people? Will it still be just like every other board?
Yes, it is-
So, so anybody can apply. Jerry would nominate, and then the board, the commission would-
Approve.
Okay, correct. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
That's, that's the intent, unless the commission wants some other direction.
Not to make the same mistake Commissioner Johnson. Not to make the same mistake Commissioner Johnson.
I like Senator myself. Just kidding, I don't. Okay, so we're looking at seven positions from seven different agencies who are all going to want their fingers on this. And my question is, such a big committee, Commission, whatever we're calling it, for a relatively small amount of money, and we're talking, what, $60,000, $80,000 a year?
Actually, we would probably say that the time they're all coming in, I would say they were probably closer to $100,000 a year.
So $100,000 a year, which on the grand scheme of things isn't a whole lot. I mean, I just wonder if the juice is worth the squeeze on this in the sense that, you know, it's $100,000. You probably spend, in their time, although we're not paying them, in their time, it'd probably cost more than that for this group to meet. But it's, I almost think it's overkill to go that far with it, but that's just my thought. I think that's a lot of people to get involved and how to spend $100,000 myself, just my opinion.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would say hopefully one of the other positive outcomes is that this group has discussions, and there are other things that could be done outside of this annual $100,000, right, of bringing, and I know the sheriff does bring different agencies together, but how do we expand upon that? How do we involve more individuals? And what are other things that could be done besides just this funding that we have? So hopefully that dialogue would help.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. So I agree, these are small amounts, although I am hopeful that the secondary benefit is exactly how you described. My question, though, really gets into then how those dollars are distributed and/or recommended in that process. And so I guess my question is, since I don't think I saw it in the charter, we are expecting this group to then propagate whatever those rules are as far as discussion of solicitation of ideas and so on and so forth? Is that...
Correct. So this group, you know, lots of counties across the country are doing things, you know, all over the board. One of them is, some of them are starting with actually doing an assessment, doing more of the data dive, right? So hopefully that county health department can bring information to this group about what is going on in Clay County and what are we seeing, and then bring this area of expertise together about what are those recommendations? You know, is it, you know, is it the goal, is it their recommendation that maybe we basically focus on preventive? So we're doing more in the school districts than we're doing in others? You know, I think that's where we're leaning towards our subject matter experts that are out there in different components of the community to bring them together and say, where should our focus be?
Well, my, at least my initial take is certainly want to listen to that expertise, but would like an understanding of what that process may be as far as how those funds, or that process by which funds would be distributed or recommended to us before we release them to the world.
Right.
I would like to have that answer before they go forward, so.
Well, so the question, to be able to answer that is, my answer to you would be, it depends on what the recommendation is.
Right.
Right? So again, when they meet and come forward and say, if these are the amount of dollars that we have annually, here's the need that we think, maybe it is, we think that the best avenue is to support the school district by increasing their Narcan, or whatever that drug is that they have available. And so then the question is, how do we work with the school district to do that? It may be something completely different, that they want to invest in preventive education, or it could be treatment and helping some of our treatment facilities and subsidize. So until they bring their ideas forward, I can't really tell you what the mechanism is to actually go to that process of allocating it. And does it have to be bid, or how do we, how do we go through that?
No, I appreciate all of that. I think the thing I would like to avoid is, the group gets together and basically says, well, we're the experts, just give us the money. I do feel like that may get a little too far, at least initially. So anyway, I think that's kind of where, what I would suggest is, you know, if they just say, well, just give it to this guy here, and there's nothing competitive to it, I do get a little concerned about that, so.
Well, I think, again, I think it depends on this group, and, you know, I would assume that if one of the members on here from their agency makes a compelling presentation to the task force, that the recommendation of the task force is to give it to the school district or to the health department or whatever. They're going to have to come to you all and present why that is.
Sure. And I recognize that it's not a lot of money, and there's lots of different ways you can use it. And if you try to be all things to all people, you're really not going to accomplish a whole lot. But even just using the school districts, for example, we have one member on it, but there's multiple school districts that we have in Clay County. So, you know, even if that was what the group decided, we're going to go all in on school districts, then I would expect to see some sort of competitive process that allows them to then have a chance to access those dollars. So I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate the answers.
Yeah, I think one of the things I would say is, in the task, in the charter of the task force, that there is support by staff from the county administrator's office, and so we will be at the table at those meetings and trying to, if that comes out, we'll have those questions about, if the school district is getting the funds, then what is their recommendation on how that should happen? Yep.
Commissioner Lawson.
Okay, I think this is great. I wish we could see more money come into it. As I looked at the number, not just so much the number of people, but the type of people, I'd find it a little bit hard to cut any of those entities out. Because as you think about it, you'd want law enforcement first and foremost in there, but then you would have to look at the health department, you'd have to look at the school districts, you'd have to, you know, every single one of those kind of has some skin in the game on something like that. So while it would be a big committee, the one thing I would really like to see is that before these people are named, that we don't talk to anybody, but we have a group of people that are interested, that we as a Commission vet the heck out of the people that want to be on this committee. Before our presiding commissioner goes to say, hey, Joe, we'd like you to be on this, let's make sure that a consensus among the Commission is set up to say, we want Joe, Mary, and Fred. These are our three recommendations, and you would agree because you've already seen all their recommendations, all of their qualifications. But I think we have, this is one where we better have our stuff together and really get people who have a vested interest in this and people that are extremely professional and will put the money in the right place. It's funny, this came up. It's been a couple of months ago. I was at an emergency room with a family member, and while I was sitting there waiting for them to do their initial go-through with that person, they brought three kids in that were on this stuff. And one of them, the gentleman, when he came back out, he was crying, and he said, I don't think he's going to make it. You know, that was heart-wrenching when you think about it. So, boy, I think this is fantastic, whatever we've got to do, but I think that the monkey is on our back, and we better be very diligent about who we put on this to make sure they do the right thing.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for putting together, you know, the mission statement and the task force as a suggestion. I, well, first of all, on duration, is it, help me understand how long the task force would be constituted? I'm a little unclear in terms of the final report termination piece.
You know, so it depends, right? Because the settlements are happening not all at the same time. So for example, one, as I said, was settled in '21. We received our first funding in '22, and we got two years. So those particular agreements, those settlements will expire before the ones with the retailers that are just now starting this year. So, you know, it depends on how these settlements come through. A couple of the settlements with some of the large companies are in the appeal process, was one of the last reports that I read. So until that's resolved, so it could go longer than 18 years because they'll, each one is looked at individually as a separate settlement agreement.
So the idea here is to maintain the task force for the duration of those payments?
Yes, right, through all of it, right.
Okay.
It may become easier those final years because, again, if they're front-loading it, it's less money coming out, and so maybe one of those that the task force only has to meet once a year because their recommendation to you all was to contribute to X. And so that is done, and so then they just kind of oversee that, yes, it got done, and here's the balance. And so it could be very simplistic on the task force in the years going farther out. But, you know, science is always changing, and so over an 18-year period, who knows what the ideas or solutions or how you deal with an overdose or preventive? And so, you know, hopefully the task force will stay current on, you know, one of those new ideas to help fight this.
Yeah, I would hope so, too. So, you know, my personal view, I'm pretty partial toward putting the money toward, directly into recovery and addiction services. And I sort of have a little bit of the concern that Commissioner Johnson mentioned, which is just that ultimately, if we're talking maybe about $100,000 a year, the membership of the task force envisioned here, you know, like Commissioner Lawson mentioned, could each make a case for why they deserve some of the funds. And my personal concern would be chopping up the $100,000 so much so that each entity gets a little slice, that then what I would prefer to have happen, which is the money go directly into recovery and treatment programs, that maybe there wouldn't be much left to actually do that.
You know, that's certainly, if that is the Commission's desire, you do not have to do a task force. You could direct staff to say, this is where we want the funds to go because, you know, this is the amount that it is. And then we could, if it's to go into treatment programs, you know, we could solicit proposals from agencies in Clay County that provides treatment programs. So, you know, it's really whatever the desire of the Commission is. It is one of those things that, from my perspective as staff, we don't have all the information to know, I hate to say it, what's the biggest bang for our buck to make the biggest difference with $100,000 a year, which is why we're kind of wanting to have a group together that is more knowledgeable than us to say, you know, this, and they may come back and say, it needs to be in treatment, or it needs to be in preventive. I don't know. But it's whatever the Commission wants us to do.
Thank you, yeah. And you're envisioning this anyway as an advisory task force, right? Ultimately, the money can go. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know that I've got a strong view one way or the other because I do think soliciting expert advice is the correct thing. I'm certainly not an issue area expert in this, you know, have some personal life experience, unfortunately, with family with it. But that being said, you know, I just, what I'm a little bit concerned about is what Commissioner Johnson mentioned, which is just when I look at the seven members, there are at least several of them that I think that there's a decent chance that what they would seek to do is to get, you know, a slice for their respective entities, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but it does mean it could get so subdivided that, I think, a good part of the core mission here, obviously what we're talking about, are folks who have struggled with opioid, you know, addiction, and as you mentioned, we're losing 100,000 people a year now to overdoses. So that's where I would want to see the money go personally, but I'm also just one of seven, so I'm, you know.
I would say by the end of this year, again, going back to the, you know, the previous slide with the funding, you know, just getting the three years of that we know that will come in this year is $248,000, and then again, we know we'll be getting additional in June, July, and August. We just don't know how much, what that would be. So part of it is, maybe it is, the task force is together for this original amount of money because this is a little bit more substantial, and gives some, you know, additional recommendations about what to do going forward. Because we don't know how much we're going to get on an annual basis.
That's a good point. I'm not sure I have any clear direction to provide. Those are just my thoughts, so, thanks.
Just want to make a few observations, and I'll go back to other Commissioners again. Really, this kind of money is almost just to sort of fill gaps and fill holes, which I think is one reason it's good to have as many, the variety of different points of view that are on this board. Hopefully, they will see where other funding is coming from and see where some of our gaps are. And seven members, while it's a pretty good-sized board and, you know, board that we're putting together here, it's not extraordinarily large. We have certainly boards that are of that size. And I think it would, I think it would be very helpful for this Commission during this process and even beyond it to express the preference of the Commission either directly or through staff. If we, if our inclination is to go for treatment and recovery or whatever, I don't see this necessarily as a process where we just, you know, let them, you know, go. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing for us to express kind of where our thoughts are, but having this number of people who are experts in their individual fields, I don't think can help it, provide us with a good perspective on the issue and allow us to deal with it more effectively. With that, Commissioner Johnson.
Couple of questions about the selection of the people on here. So you are referring to them as appointments that will be appointed by this Commission?
Correct.
So it won't be, hey, we go to the sheriff's department of school and say, hey, you have one position, you get to select who's on this committee?
Well, my thought would be, and I think a little bit to Commissioner Lawson, I would not handle this like we do our normal boards and Commission, which is, you know, go out to the website and fill out an application. If the Commission agrees with these categories, these businesses, this area of emphasis, then my thought would be, yes, we'd reach out to the sheriff and say, here's what we're looking for. Who do you have? Who would you recommend, right? And that name would be, you know, shared with all of you. I would think we'd do the same thing with the school districts and say, you know, you all tell us, you know, who is interested. We'll have them fill out either a resume or something and submit that to all of you. And then you could make decisions on who you would like to appoint. But my thought would be, you know, you would really want to reach out to the sheriff or the school district or the health department to say, here's what we're doing, you know, who on your staff, who, you know, has the passion, who has the information, who has the knowledge? A lot of this, to some degree, you know, if I'm at the meetings, I'm going to be asking for data, right? So if we're talking about treatment and preventive or whatever we're talking about, what kind of data do we have on what's really going on in Clay County? And my guess is the sheriff's got a piece of that information, the health department's got a piece of that information, school district does. And so how do we bring that all together to really get a sense of what is going on in Clay County? But that would be, my thought is, we'd really open it up to these agency areas and talk about what are we, you know, what is the purpose? What's the mission? What's the charter? And have them submit to you all, you know, people that would be interested or have the area of expertise.
And then on that list, I don't remember who was on that list of seven, but was the prosecutor's office involved in this or no?
They, well, we have legal profession, so it could be the prosecutor's office, it could be someone from the courts, it could be somebody from family court. I left it pretty broad.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yeah, I would really like to see somebody from the prevention community on this Commission. I know Smithville's got a prevention, substance abuse or substance use committee. It's like Smithville Community in Action. But there's numerous prevention groups here in Clay County, so I'd really like to see the prevention community represented on this, on this Commission, too, or task force.
And so they don't fit in any, so they're probably not in the treatment or recovery, so prevention group, okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Further discussion or comments? I think at this point, we need to think in terms of what direction we want to give the staff to go forward on this, assuming we would like to go forward in some form or fashion. I think we've given the administrator a good amount of feedback. Are we, I'm going to ask, and I'm going to, I'm going to kind of go back and forth this. Are we as a group good to go in this general direction? I'm not asking for consensus to go forward at this moment. I'm just making sure everybody wants to go in this general direction, and head nods will do, but if you'd like to comment, certainly that's in order as well. So if we're looking at going down this road, administrator, I would ask you, I don't know that we've given you quite enough to work on, but maybe I'm mistaken, do you, you feel you need some more clarification from the commission and what can we do to, to provide that clarification if you think it's necessary?
So can I needle on that and get back to you?
Sure.
Part of me says, you know, maybe completely rethink the task force in the aspect that it's more of a, in the beginning, we have $250,000, you know, we pull a little bit of a larger group together, understand what's going on in the county and what recommendations they would have and then present that to the commission. So there may not be a need for an ongoing long-term 18-year task force, but maybe it's we get them up front and come up with a recommendation and plan for you all to consider and approve and then we just implement that over the next 18 years. So you know, would that be a little bit more in consideration of what the commission might be more comfortable with than a long-term task force for the entire 18 years?
Well, we have the ability on any, to any board or commission, apart from the statutory ones, to be able to end them when we please or alter their, their makeup as we go along.
Right, you could always, let's say that we say, let's just for the first year, right, to help figure out what, what the program looks like. And then let's say a year or two down the road, we get a lot more money than we thought we were going to get. Commission always has the ability to implement the task force and, and do something else with it, if that's your desire at that point in time.
Commissioner Wagner?
As you describe that, I'd dub that the juice worth the squeeze committee, if you don't mind, if you don't mind me taking that, that point. But, but, but all joking aside, I think there's some validity to it because again, we don't know if we're going to really have a lot of money, right? And I think your point of that group coming back and giving a recommendation as here's this area that we think this is worth investing in. And honestly, the, the, the recommendation as to whether or not an outside body needs to run that process, I mean, I think there's a certain value of saying, hey, if we give you some direction, county, just do this and let them, you know, give us some recommendation and expertise as to, as to the operation of such a, a task force. And frankly, if one is necessary, that's not a bad question to ask. And I, I think what you're contemplating is kind of a, you know, a modification of the mission, at least at its outset, makes some sense to me, just to see if it's worth 18 to 20 years' worth of identifying people and putting them on there and managing that process with them. That's not a bad thought in my opinion, to, to, to kind of do the, the 1A, right? So that, I, I wouldn't mind going down that road.
Commissioner Johnson?
This might be put in the cart before the horse, but with this task force or anything similar to this task force, you can have a lot of expertise on there with a lot of different, well, just a lot of expertise on there. I would like to see, instead of a recommendation coming back to us, I would like to see multiple recommendations coming back to us in the, in the terms of, you know, if we want to go down the treatment method, what would be a good plan for treatment with this money?
Okay.
What would be a good plan for prevention? What would be a good plan for, for enforcement? You know, some different options, that hey, you know, we'll put a little bit here, a little bit there, well, let's, what if we're all in on treatment, what does that look like? What if we're all in on prevention? What if we're all in on enforcement? What do those options look like? That would be helpful for me, I think.
Okay.
But just give them some options too.
Further discussion? Would we, how do we want to proceed then? Do you want to go ahead and draw something up that we can consider or would the commission like to go a different direction than that? Any, any comment or observations? So do we want to go ahead and have the administrator draw up whatever resolution that, based on what she has heard or is that putting, is that going a little too fast here?
Yeah, so my, my thought is, what I heard you say is, let me take this back and let me redo the task force with its mission and length of time and sort of its, to, to really be sort of the kickoff and the plan presentation and bring it back to you all to see, did I capture what you'd like for us to do? And then, you know, we'll go from there. And that'll also, you know, while we certainly know there's a need in the community and we don't want to be sitting on funding, we also know in the next couple of months, we will be getting additional funding, we just don't know what that is. And so, you know, it'd be nice to kind of know what that is. So, you know, for this kickoff, what is that pot of money that is available and then what does the plan look like going forward? So my thought would be, let me take this, let me, let me do some rewriting to it and some work on it from what I heard this evening and I'll bring it back in a discussion item to see if I captured what you, what you'd like to do.
Commissioner Wagner, did you have some comment?
Yeah, just the comment that no matter which direction we take this, whether it's a longer term or a shorter term, or with that short term being, we're going to give you some recommendations as far as treatment or law enforcement, whatever the case may be, it's still, at least in my view, still boils back to who are we soliciting those opinions from? And still looking at whether it's these lines of members or, or others or multiples within here. So I don't want to get, get, again, the, the cart before the horse, but I, I don't mind, I think, beginning to prime the pump as far as suggesting, hey, within these groups, will you start looking at identifying people who can be part of this conversation, whether it takes this form or another form? I think we're still going to solicit that, that expertise and so I would, others can disagree or, or if, if the will is to do something else, but my feeling would be, as we decide what this all looks like, we still need these people. And putting out there that we're going to be looking for people in these various categories at least makes some sense to me so that when we know exactly what we want to do, we have already got people thinking about being a part of this. And so, hopefully that's not going too far out, but I do feel like we're going to need them eventually, so why not begin putting that, those feelings out there? Would be my thought.
So is it the consensus of the commission that the administrator go ahead and do some more work on this, kind of contemplate what we've said and then return to us with maybe a few, bit of a tweaked proposal or whatever, but not necessarily a resolution? Is that pretty much okay? It looks like that's the consensus of the commission, so do you feel comfortable with those, the amount of information?
I do.
I think what I would like to do at this point, since I'm just about through my bottle of water, I, I think I would like to go ahead and have a stand down for about five minutes. So we've got two more discussion items, which could take some, some extra time. So just take a very short, maybe five-minute break and then reconvene here and can, and pick up the agenda where we left off. Thank you.
All right, we are back from our short break and we are under discussion items. We have just completed discussion of the first item that brings us to the second item, which would be resolution on KC TIF. It's listed as administration, but I think Commissioner Johnson might have initiated this, so if you would like to start the conversation, certainly I'm prepared to recognize you for that purpose. There you go. Did you have anything you want to say first about it? I saw it has administration on there.
I just, we just put it on.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's been a week since this first came. There's a couple of questions that I have about this. Well, I guess I'll start with the beginning of just how the resolution came about and how it came up, and I'm concerned that we're not all playing from the same sheet of music when it comes to resolutions and ordinances and that kind of thing. So my understanding is the resolution came from you and you put it on the agenda without a discussion with us. And is that your understanding of how, is it just you or all the commissioners could put a resolution or ordinance on the agenda?
The reason that I didn't think about doing it the other way was because this is non-buying, it has no legal bind to it. If, for instance, it was contemplating, say, an action by the commission that would, especially if it involved the expenditure of money, and that was also one of the, then I think, yeah, I think the discussion would certainly be coming more into play. The other part of it is if, you know, as I'd expressed last week, I have no problem with taking this over the course of a couple of weeks, so I had no expectations necessarily of passing it that particular evening. So I think the spirit of that is because we have a, we have a, have kind of gone into the mode of passing things on first read, that putting it on for discussion gave it the two occasions that it'd be discussed. In the case of this, I'm perfectly, I was perfectly comfortable with going for a second read, so I mean, at that point, we're going over the course of two meetings, that given to the fact that I guess it's non-binding and kind of a sense of the commission, it didn't seem as, it didn't seem as important, and quite honestly, we'd discuss it tonight, so should it be taken off the table and brought up in a subsequent meeting, this is going to undergo three meetings rather than the usual two.
Yeah, so I guess first, and maybe the counselor or administrator can chime in, on the processes that we go through to get something on the agenda, because we not only had some detailed discussion about this, but also passed an ordinance that very clearly clarified this. And so I thought, so I was kind of shocked, several of us were kind of shocked that you showed up, and we didn't, most of us were in the impression that commissioners, and I didn't know if it was different for the presiding commissioner, I didn't think that was when the ordinance was written and passed, but the commissioners don't put things, don't put resolutions or ordinances on the agenda unless they first come before they can be put on discussion, essentially, that's what the, that's what the ordinance says. They can put on as discussion, and then when you get kind of the head knot of the direction that we want to go, then we come back as an ordinance or resolution. Is that, am I wrong about that? Has that changed since our, we passed that on March 15th?
So I'm working from memory here, because I don't have the operating rules in front of me. I believe the approach we've agreed on is that the, and by constitution, the county administrator is the kind of the keeper of the agenda.
Right.
If a commissioner has an idea for a resolution or ordinance or discussion topic, whatever it might be, presents that to the administrator. If the administrator agrees, you know, this is actually probably something that we should put on for action, then it can go on. If there's any question about that, or perhaps something that there's uncertainty about, it has an absolute right to go on to discussion from a commissioner. I believe, I know that was how it was originally, I believe that's still the way it is, is that it, you know, again, the administrator is the keeper of the agenda, if one of you has an idea for something that could go on that agenda, then, hey, what do you think about this? Well, you know, that probably would be a good resolution, or that might be better for a discussion topic, let's get some guidance from the commission, and then we take it from there.
Is that, do you agree with that?
Yes, in theory. I would say that the practice has been and the interpretation is that unless it is a time-sensitive issue, that it usually goes on as discussion.
Yeah. So, so that's the first thing, I think we need to make sure that we clarify, so that we're all on the same page, and I'm not trying to pick a fight over this or anything, but we had on March 15th, and I went back and watched it again, and if anybody wants to watch it, started at two hours and eight minutes, we had a detailed discussion, all of us, on this very exact thing, because we were talking about an ordinance that Commissioner Wagner and I helped craft, and I believe it's 30.17 in that ordinance, or it's talked specifically, and on one of the original drafts, it included that the commission could bring forth only items for discussion, but also an ordinance and or a resolution. We eliminated ordinance and resolution, that we couldn't bring that forward unless it first came for discussion. And so that's why I think it was, and we've had a couple of commissioners, and they missed it last week and got me thinking about it, where they asked to put things on the agenda, told no they couldn't, it had to go on, on discussion. So I don't want to get in a situation where we have the county administrator put in a position of having to make a judgment between whose commissioners, you know, stuff is more important to get on the, on the, on the agenda or not, because, you know, she's told, at least two that I know of, that you can't have do it, and she told you that you can do it. So that's what I, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that, and I think the policy is pretty clear that we all, the ordinance that we all passed was pretty clear, and the discussions that we had at the time were very clear. Again, 3/15 is the date, if you want to look it up, two hours and eight minutes, that starts that discussion in detail, and I thought we were all on the same page. So that's why I was confused when this come up, and I know there's some pushback from Commissioner Lawson and Withington as well, because that didn't happen for them, and I didn't know if there's some exceptions to it, and to your point, you made it sound like there's an exception to it if it's, if it's, I think, non-binding, or doesn't involve money or something like that, which isn't part of the ordinance, but if that's how it's going to be, we just have to be on the same page, and I don't care how we do it.
If I could make a suggestion when that kind of situation, should it arise again? This might be one possible solution, that would be during the approval of the agenda process, it might be another way to approach this, using this for an example, so when we go for approval to a commissioner who has a concern about this sort of thing, to make a motion that that, that topic be moved from regular agenda to discussion item. That would, that would still allow for our noticing ability, so that we would be able to discuss it within Sunshine laws, and that would also perhaps, that would be another route to take, should that arise in the future. Whether it does or does not, I have no way of knowing, but that, that might be another way to go about that, is just to say, you know, essentially, motion to move 2023 123, whatever the number is, from regular agenda to discussion item.
Or we just all follow the policies as it's written, and we don't put a resolution or ordinance on the agenda without first making, having it come as a discussion, which is what we've been doing. And that way it doesn't put our county administrator in an uncomfortable position, well, hey, so-and-so wants us on the agenda, I just think it's, I don't, it at least has the appearance of not being fair, and I just think it'd be a more fair way to do that. Anyways, that's, that's my two cents on that, and all the other people comment on that if they want later, but regarding the issue itself, last week I was really confused, I was under the impression, and, and this could be just, I didn't hear things, I was under the impression that the, that the TIF commission was not meeting, has not been meeting.
That particular TIF commission, let me, if I could just explain momentarily, so the Kansas City TIF commission itself, and in fact had a meeting last Tuesday, so they meet for the entire metro, excuse me, the entire Kansas City area, so you've got all of the different ones together, because some members go across, especially, well, the city members go across the board, so they will be on a Clay County issue and a Raytown issue, so they bring them all together at one time. What has been happening over the last two months, previous to this month, was that all items were taken off the agenda, that related to a Clay County issue. There was something of an exception, and I don't want to try your patience here, but there were, on the last Tuesday's meeting, there were two items put up, one was a plat purchase development Ninth Amendment, and the other one was for consideration of acceptance of minutes of that particular subset. What happened was those brought up, but not, Commission Council, TIF Commission Council said, because there was some question that we really could not take those issues up, so they were in fact not taken up. So this, that would constitute the third month when our items were not put up, even to the, and I was, to tell you the truth, a little surprised to see those two items on there, because I was going to raise the point that we did not have a proper, properly constituted commission that would deal with that particular narrow band of items, but that was, that did not end up being the case, because council said, no, it's, the question is there, and so no vote was taken. The public hearing that was the first item I spoke of was put off without vote till the next meeting, which would be July 11. So, yes, the first two, the two previous months, yes, that is accurate, in this immediate past meeting Tuesday for the, for this month, there were items brought up, but they were not taken up and voted on.
So the commission has been meeting every single month for this whole year. It's not like they haven't had the commission meeting, but, I guess my next question, at those commission meetings, are all six of our people that you've appointed, are they there?
There's a little point that there's no agenda for them to vote upon.
Say that again?
Well, if it, there's no agenda for them to vote on, because if they show up, there is nothing there under agenda items, it has no agenda items under these different subdivisions, the different sub-TIF committees that we are involved in, so it would just say no items on the agenda, so.
So it's a broad, it's a broad meeting with a bunch of different TIF commissions there, is that what it is?
In sequence. So, I'm sorry, I, let me know if I'm getting too deep in the weeds here, but what they do is they have different subgroups of the TIF commission doing different parts of Kansas City. There is one meeting that is more broad, but that is administrative meetings and that sort of a thing, but yes, also on, like, the Shoal Creek TIF, one of the things that was included in the notice for that meeting was there are no agenda items for the Shoal Creek TIF.
So the Clay County, then, the Clay County Subcommittee, they would, only they would vote on certain things on, that's on the agenda just for them?
Correct.
And what's happening is they're not putting anything on the agenda just for them?
Right, because my understanding is because they don't, there is some doubt as to whether or not that, that commission is properly constituted, moreover, and again, I don't want to go on and on about this, but there were actions taken up to that point, subsequent to when we realized what the statute was, because quite honestly, it was news to a lot of us that that statute was there, it's rather obscure, so there is some thought that at whatever point we end up constituting what is a, an operating TIF commission, we will need to go back and approve all the actions taken by the other just to confirm them. Whether or not that's necessary, again, that's a legal question, but it seems prudent.
Okay, and, but we have six members that are there, the other three members that are not Kansas City members are usually there, you know, the school board and, in other words, is there a quorum, is there a quorum there minus Kansas City's people, is it, do we have a quorum of people there?
Not for the items that have no agenda items, but for there are others that, and it gets confusing because there's a lot of cross-membership on these. For instance, there was a Platt County, Platt R3, I sit on that, no, no, I do not sit on that, I apologize, but the school districts do, so I think there are members that sit on that from, I think the Platt School District might also sit on, but there's a lot of cross-membership, so every time they bring up a heading, they do a roll call just to, you know, confirm who is and who is not available to vote. I know it gets a little bit confusing, and I'd be happy to send you, you know, I don't know if you've looked at our agendas, but it, it might be a little easier when you look at that to see how they're organized, so it kind of, it makes a bit more sense when you see it that way, at least to me.
I have a copy of all the past minutes of the last, actually since December, I think, November, December.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't read through all of them yet, but that's what, that's where my confusion was, so I wasn't getting it with this Subcommittee staff and the different agendas for the different subcommittees. I was under the impression there's just no meeting happening at all. So the reason why these subcommittees are not getting an agenda, we think, is because Kansas City does not want to give them an agenda, we think that the mayor himself is probably holding this up, is that?
I'm a little cautious about pointing fingers, I would say that the reason that I'm aware of is because there is some concern about the legality of it. The other part of it is, with the way TIF commissions work is the, the city whose TIF commission is, their clerk would, I believe their clerk would generate agendas, or at least put things on the agenda, so that was kind of the way that, that's kind of the way that works, so if Kansas City chooses not to put things on that particular agenda, they don't go on.
And is one of the reasons why they're not, maybe why they're not putting on, is because the city attorneys, their city attorney is trying to figure out legal maneuverings here, and whether or not the stuff in the past is legal or not, is that what's going on?
I would speculate that there might, there is certainly a conversation going on. One of the things that is, that has happened since the last time we spoke about this is there is apparently a proposed ordinance that's floating around, which is, which may or may not resolve this. I have my suspicions, but what, when I got a hold of it, I have, and I'm sure that the county attorney is checking it out, but before I really dug into it or made much comment on it, I was, I've submitted it to legal counsel, so that Kevin can tell us, you know, if it's legal, what, basically give us a legal kind of lowdown on it, which I would, you know, certainly want to share with the commission, because this would be an ordinance, by the way, that would go before the City of Kansas City Council.
Yeah, okay, and just so the rest of the commissioners know, I tried to do my own due diligence on this, I reached out to Councilmember Hall, Heather Hall, the city attorney for Kansas City, who hasn't called me back, and then Mayor Lucas himself, and he and I texted back and forth, and he actually called me this morning, but I missed his call, and I tried to call him back, and so we never actually talked face to face, but he says he's willing to talk with me about it, but anyway, I don't know if anybody else had any conversations, but I'm hoping things can move along with this and they get something done with this, but those are all my comments for now.
Does that, does that help answer some of the questions?
That helps a little bit, because I was confused, I told you, I was, I thought they were, they were not meeting at all, and they refused to actually even have a meeting, but now our people that we've appointed have been meeting every month, they just not give them anything to vote on.
That, well, yeah, there's no reason to show up, for instance, if we, if we, if we noticed up a meeting for this body, and there was nothing on, there was just, you know, pledge, roll call, adjournment, there would seem little reason to be there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just to give a finer point to the process, so in my second term as a councilman, I was the chair of the Shoal Creek TIF Committee, and Shoal Creek TIF is probably the biggest TIF by landmass in Clay County, easily. So that was a group of five, the, that TIF documents suggested who would sit on it. We would go through both projects as well as reimbursables, and make an advisory vote to the TIF commission as to how to deal with whatever that was. So then it would go to the larger TIF commission to, to agree with that recommendation, and then move forward with that recommendation. The thing to remember about Kansas City, it is, it is the only city in the state of Missouri that is in more than one county, and it's for that reason why you have Jackson County stuff, Clay County stuff, but it's all under that umbrella, but you cycle out the people who are making those decisions. I think, this will be my speculation, but I think the central issue for Kansas City, and this kind of gets to you the point about other organizations being a part of the TIF commission, you had a, you had a group made up of Kansas City, these other jurisdictions, but Kansas City had the majority of votes. Now what we are suggesting is that is no longer the case in Kansas City, Clay County. I think that is quite honestly the point that everyone is trying to get through, because that would be new for Kansas City to deal with. And meanwhile, as I suggested, starting using the example of Shoal Creek, so we've got activity in Shoal Creek going on right now. Those recommendations have been made by the Shoal Creek TIF group, and it's been bumped up to Clay County, or, excuse me, TIF Commission, Clay County, and there is at least, based on the call that I got late last week, about $5 million of reimbursables that that development group is waiting for, and they're asking, well, isn't any one meeting? Well, no. So, so that's the dilemma here, and I think the root of that dilemma is whether or not Clay County or the City of Kansas City makes up the bulk, or the majority of, or non-Kansas City members make up the majority of that group, that is a seminal shift in that. So we'll let them fight that out. I know I emailed, I think, everybody here following last week's meeting, conversations and responses that I had. I too have reached out to the city attorney of Kansas City twice, have not heard anything back from him, in texting back and forth with, with the mayor of Kansas City, he firmly puts it in the city attorney's, that's probably what he told you, or will tell you, but that's what I know. So I think there's a lot of surprise, but I think the root of all of that is, however this goes, it's a big time shift in how TIF work is done in the City of Kansas City, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Lawson.
Okay, so, we've done more tap dancing than Fred Astaire, but the bottom line here is that we've got these folks out there that are waiting for their money. I'm not so worried about the guy at the top, but I'm thinking about all those little sub, you know, subcontractors, that that $100,000 or $50,000 means the difference in making a house payment and not making a house payment, you know, getting groceries and not getting groceries. I guess the bottom line was, my understanding when we went through this last time was, number one, there were no meetings going on for this particular TIF group, but now I see there were meetings going on. The bottom line was, our people that were approved last year have never been sworn in The bottom line was, our people that were approved last year have never been sworn in and seated, right?
That, that, that's sort of right. The thing is, the, there were no meetings in the month of April and May because there was no agenda. So what was sent out in the notice was there are no agenda items for, and then it would list those sub, uh, those sub-Tiff districts, so to speak. Uh, then we did have, as I just outlined, one that I was rather surprised to see noticed up for this past Tuesday, which of course I attended.
Yeah, so, so the bottom line is, have, are we empowered in any way to help these people get their money? And what do we need to do to close that gap and, and try to get the city to, to go ahead and get everything taken care of and approved? One last issue, the, the gentlemen and ladies that you put on there, do they have to live in Clay County, Kansas City? Or can they live in Clay County in Smithville or Gladstone or wherever in the heck?
I'm glad you asked that, because the thing is, it, it's, it's rather confusing. I had to go back and reread this, I, I read it when I made those, uh, those, those appointments. But I went, I had to go back and reread it again because we make a lot of appointments. This, under this particular statute, no, it is not necessary. But for instance, um, say for the Smithville Tiff Commission or North Kansas City, yes, under those circumstances it is. It gets a little bit confusing in that, you know, then you, you stack up all the other boards and commissions we have, and there are various requirements. But no, in this particular case, and that's a rather unusual circumstance, to say the least, it is not necessary. Uh, I wanted to make sure that there were people who had, uh, an interest in Clay County, an interest in making sure that there was good development going on. But, uh, no, that, that was something, like I say, when I read, when we went through the statute last year, then I've assigned the people, it's been so long since we've assigned them.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but the other part of that is, uh, none of those individuals have been challenged as not being qualified under the residency, uh, aspect of it. So there's been no challenge from anyone who would have, uh, who would, who would not necessarily want to see those individuals seated.
Okay, everybody that's been nominated to be on that committee is legal to sit on that committee?
So far as I know, uh, certainly the attorney for the Tiff Commission, uh, is, uh, is aware of them. Uh, and he has not raised any questions upon the legality, and more, maybe more to the point, I have heard nothing from the City of Kansas City that they, I have any question about the legality of the seating of those individuals.
Well, I, I think the bottom line here is what do we do? Do, do we do nothing? Do we have legal talk to legal? Or, you know, what, what's going to be the outcome of how we can fix it for these little people, if you will, so?
I think, I think Commissioner Wagner put his finger right on it, and that is, this is a very serious change in the way stiff, uh, Tiff is structured. Uh, because, um, you know, I, I have no doubts the mayor would like to keep control of those. We, you know, for us, this is statutory question and we're following statutes, so, um, we're just going to have to kind of keep, keep plugging away on this thing. And I think if, 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 one of the things that would be helpful if at some point we do reach that is a consensus from commission on how we, uh, how we, uh, view that, that particular issue.
Well, I, I, I think we need to do something, you know, and I, I don't know what the best answer is. I think trying to send a letter out, you know, is just, you, you don't want to widen that gap any farther than it's widened between ourselves and the city. But, but then again, you've got to do what's right for people that need the money. So I, I don't know whether, like I say, can, can legal talk to legal? Sometimes that's the best way.
There has been communication, by the way, something else that, uh, this issue may easily come up again uh, as it relates to the ATA nominations. As you, you may recall, um, that we as a, as a county nominate three individuals, and then the mayor chooses one of those individuals. There is some thought that he might, he, the mayors in the past have ignored that. And that's, uh, that's, that's another concern. So another reason that we, that it's good we're discussing this issue to this length is we may be revisiting it in another arena.
Yeah, but we need to do this now. We need to do something. I don't know what that answer, what there is, but if somebody's got some ideas, let's hear them and let's, let's get something done instead of just talking about it, because we, you know, uh, it, it's, it kind of, the monkey's kind of on our back in a way. You know, we've got these people sitting here, but then again, it's in the hands of the City of Kansas City to go ahead and seat these people and have it done with. So how, how do you force that issue, you know, without, um, creating more unhappiness between the, the two entities?
It is, it is a truly unique situation, only it occurs in one other place in the entire state of Missouri, so we don't have a playbook to go back to. Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Withington, I didn't mean to quite go on so long.
No, you're good. Um, I just want to echo what Commissioner Johnson had said earlier this year when I had put a non-controversial, uh, resolution on the agenda. I was told I couldn't, and without having a discussion, that passed six zero. This one is pretty controversial, so I was pretty surprised to see a resolution with no, um, no discussion first. So I want to make sure all seven commissioners are playing by the same rules, especially when we had in-depth conversation. And last week you had said that you weren't part of that conversation, but I went back and re-watched that commission meeting, and you were part of that conversation.
I, I think I said I can't speak to that at the moment.
You said you weren't part of the conversation. We can go back and watch that one, that, from last week, too.
I don't, I, I, if you say so, I don't want to play gotcha here. If you say so.
No, I'm not trying to play gotcha. I'm just saying I want to make sure everybody plays by the same rules. But, um, also, this week, have you had any conversations with anybody about this down at City Hall?
City Hall?
Because you said you don't want to point fingers this year, this week, but last week you wanted us to pass a resolution saying the mayor was failing to do his job, so I just didn't know if anything had changed from this week and last week.
Uh, one of the reasons, uh, to tell you the truth, I'm trying to react to what the will of the commission is. Because there was some concern raised about that, so I've tried to back off that a little bit and trying to modify, you know, the idea of not pointing fingers. So I'm trying, I'm trying to react basically to what I'm hearing from the commission so that I'm, um, I'm representing the commission's viewpoints.
Okay, I just didn't know if anything had changed, so, all right, thank you.
Apart from the, uh, possible, uh, ordinance from Kansas City that, uh, that our counselor is, is, is looking over. That's the main thing that is, I think, has some, uh, change to it that might, might, I, I, I mean, Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. I just, speaking to our colleague's question of next steps, I, I, I do feel in some respects the, the resolution that we discussed is, is almost a moot point now, because we've been calling, emailing, texting and all that, so they all know we know. So in some respects, uh, that, that ship may have sailed. Um, but I, I, I will suggest, um, in at least one of my conversations with the folks who are looking for reimbursement with the Shoal Creek Tiff, um, there is at least a recognition that things are awfully late. And, uh, and my advice, quite honestly, and I, I don't, I don't think I went too far afield in making it, was simply that for the four or five Tiffs that were on that list that were provided last week, I said, it seems to me that you guys, and I know, Commissioner Johnson and I have had this conversation as well, that, uh, to your point, they're trying to get reimbursed so they can distribute those dollars where they need to go. They have a fiduciary reason for this issue to be resolved in some fashion. But it, it, in my conversation, I did not get the sense that they were talking to one another. Uh, my advice, uh, to, to them was you need to start talking to one another, because here's the issue. And, and, you know, we can do what we can do, um, because we have this issue with the folks that we want to have seated. But it's awfully strong when folks who are now looking for seven million dollars in reimbursements start talking too. And, and so I, I don't know where that conversation went. I don't know if those conversations are happening. But I would suggest that as we try to put on that legal pressure, which I, I believe we should, they, um, have skin in the game as well. And, and I suggested to them, um, you know, gather, gather your troops, circle your wagons, whatever metaphor you like, and then start having those conversations as well. My, my feeling is if you're coming from both directions, that will help. The other, the only other option I can suggest, which is to me not necessarily an option, but an observation that was made by one of the council members I spoke to was, it may be when a new council gets seated, then all of a sudden this backlog starts going through. But that means that's August 1 when they get seated. So I'm not exactly sure that, that is an option for us. But just wanted to offer those, um, those conversations to get to your question, so.
Uh, before I go to Commissioner Carpenter, there was something else that was brought up that I think might be a salient point that I found out recently, and that is, um, we should not feel, uh, at least on the level of not having members, uh, seated or, or, or approved. Apparently, I, I've heard anecdotally that there are a lot of commissions and boards that the, the mayor has not, um, uh, made assignment to, and on a, on a variety of issues. So, um, that, it, it sounds like something, if it makes us feel any better, it's, it's not just Clay County that's being singled out here. But, um, to tell you the truth, uh, you know, for me, my, uh, you know, my advocacy is for Clay County. The other entities that have not gotten their members assigned, I feel sorry for them, but, um, I'm here for Clay County. Uh, with that, Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you want to be recognized.
Thanks, yeah, no, just briefly, I mean, I think we all agree it's an issue and needs to be, uh, resolved, and I think everybody agreed that last week, too. The question is just what's going to actually, um, you know, bring about the desired outcome. I still think probably the best bet is to continue these conversations, sounds like, uh, some ongoing, and I would encourage that to continue. And then, you know, I, I don't know if at some point, you know, we hit some kind of, at the end of the month is what I suggested last week, but, uh, where we might want to, uh, consider doing a, a resolution of some kind. My hope would be that through ongoing conversation, maybe we can get it resolved that way. But if we don't, and we pass some kind of resolution, um, it feels likely that that resolution is going to be met with resistance, and we may end up past the August new council, uh, uh, timeframe in either scenario. Um, so if there's a way to do it faster, it seems like the way to do it faster would be is if we can somehow, uh, have enough conversations with council folks and the mayor and, uh, legal over there that, that maybe they'll, uh, change their perspective through conversation. But if, if they're not going to, you know, I'm just not sure that a resolution's going to, is gonna, is gonna do anything but cause them to dig in. That being said, at some point, after we've made a legitimate effort and exhausted that as a route, which I'm not sure we had done as of last week, at least, I, I think prob, maybe, you know, you've, you've attempted to, to do so, right? And, and I, maybe to some extent legal counsel has, I'm not sure. But I don't know that, uh, the rest of us had, had put in enough effort in that regard yet, uh, reaching out to council people and stuff. So just suggest maybe we give it another week or two, and if no fruit is born from those conversations, then revisit the resolution, so.
Uh, by the way, it has done, one of the things that, that was hoped for, and that is a generated conversation. It's brought it up on the radar. Uh, by the way, uh, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep saying, oh, yes, but there's one more thing, but something you said popped something in. And I'm trying to, to inform everybody here as, as much as possible, but I don't always have, have those thoughts organized in a way that I would, I would like to. There, there are those, uh, not surprisingly contractors who are extremely interested and extremely upset. Uh, and that is starting to percolate, uh, towards our friends south of the river a little bit so that they understand that there is a, um, there's a real issue here that needs to be dealt with. Um, with that, and, and I don't know if there's any more conversation, but I would like to recognize, um, Commissioner Johnson, if you'd like to go ahead, because this is subject matter, so I always like to, to give the, uh, the person who, who brings up the subject the opportunity to make closing remarks, so Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I think we need to give it another week or two to kind of percolate, see what happens behind the scenes there, and then kind of game plan what the next steps are. I have some opinions on what I think next steps should be, but I'll, I guess I'll withhold those until, until we get to that point, if we get to that point. And I'm hopeful that maybe some things will start happening behind the scenes and as more people, you know, make some contacts and, and talk to some people that we can get some things moving. That's all I have, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that, unless there's any other comments, that will conclude, um, this particular discussion item. That brings us, excuse me, I apologize. That brings us to our final discussion item, that would be Senate Bill 190, which is the senior tax credit, and I believe, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lawson, I believe, I believe you had, uh, had brought that up, so if you'd like to, to initiate the discussion, proceed.
Okay, great. Uh, so I was very excited about this bill because I am a senior and I could get some credit back. Wow, wouldn't that be nice? Um, or not have to pay taxes. One of the things I was concerned about when I found out about this bill, uh, there's two parts to the bill. Uh, there's a part that's going to be taken care of by the state, and that's the break that people will get for their, um, the not having to pay Missouri taxes on social security. That'll help everybody. But the other part that is solidly going to be jumping on our backs is that these seniors are going to be able to get, not have to pay real estate tax. Not the, not the, uh, full boat of taxes, but that portion. And so, uh, I thought that it might be great if our auditor would just briefly kind of go over that for anybody watching or anybody that isn't real familiar with the bill, uh, to just kind of say how this is going to impact us and a little bit about the bill. And then I've got some thoughts, and I'll make them breathe.
If you are prepared, Mr. Auditor, you certainly are, if you would like, we could discuss a little more if you'd like, a few moments, but at your, uh, at your, uh, at your pleasure. Oh, don't forget to turn on the, your mic.
I, I'll do that, thank you. Uh, my name is Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor, um, and I do have a presentation, if, if that can be brought up here on the computer, and, and I promise, I recognize it's very late, so this will be abbreviated. I appreciate it. All right, um, so yeah, as, as Commissioner Lawson brought up, and I, I appreciate your bringing this up, because this is something that counties throughout the state have really been talking about a lot. I think, uh, you know, big caveat we have to discuss is the governor needs to sign this bill first. Um, so until he signs this, it's, it's, uh, you know, kind of a moot point discussion. But I will say other counties are, are already getting ahead of it, thinking about how to implement it and what the impact will be. So it behooves us to have those discussions in earnest. Um, as far as especially the, um, the effective date, which we'll, we'll really want to give a, you know, review on, uh, you know, generally August 28th, but the language for the property tax doesn't really specify the tax year for property taxes. So it could go into effect as soon as this year's property taxes. Let me just dive in here real quick. So what the bill did is it added a new section to Chapter 137, uh, 1050. And, um, essentially the property tax portion, uh, basically as, as Commissioner Lawson discussed, is it's in a nutshell freezing, uh, what senior citizens pay on their real estate property taxes. But it's actually not stopping the increased valuation. The Assessor will continue to do that, um, for, for those purposes. However, there will be a credit, which is something the county has never done before, uh, on that tax bill for the difference between, uh, the age when you become eligible and, and the increases to that tax bill, uh, going forward. So that's essentially what it is in a nutshell, you know, it doesn't specify an age. The social security eligibility is 62 or older, worked at least 10 years and paid your FICA on the employee withholding. So that's, that's really, uh, how it could be viewed. So, you know, with that, I think it, it, I just would like to look then, uh, as the auditor, is giving you essentially all the information so you can make a decision should the governor assign this bill. Because the way, there are two ways this, this can be enacted. Uh, the commission can pass an ordinance, put it into effect, or the, the people can petition, uh, for a ballot question to pass it. Um, so those are really the two routes for this to be able to be approved. Um, so I want to make sure as your auditor to, you know, give you all the information, uh, so you can make that decision. So really, I looked at census information, um, you know, we have roughly 15% of the population is over 65. Remember, our number is 62, so it's not the best information. Strip out those who aren't adults who couldn't, you know, buy homes, and, and, uh, you know, 30% are 18, you get to more like 20%. We also know from the census data that roughly two-thirds, uh, actually own their home as opposed to renting or otherwise. So you could take two-thirds of 21% to get 14%, and that's actually close to what the population rate is. Now, we also wanted to look into, besides just census information, working with Assessor Baldwin, um, and his office. Baldwin and his office, about what that means from actual parcel perspective, and looking at the American Community Survey. And we know that, as you can see there, it ranges from 25% to 35% of those who are over 60 and are an owner occupied in a home. On residential parcels, it works out to 20%. Again, it's roughly 2/3 of 30%, gets us to 20%. So that's kind of the window of 14% to 15% of what I'm looking at as auditor, is as far as what is the percentage of assessed valuation that essentially won't increase in future years? And, you know, once we define that, then we'll know what the actual fiscal impact will be. We also know that residential real estate comprises 60% of our total assessed value. In 2022, it's $3.4 billion out of $5.8 billion. Looked at some preliminary numbers from the Assessor, that percentage is about the same, 62%, with preliminary figures for 2023. Also wanted to mention, too, I did go back to 1990, 2000, 2010, as far as the senior percentage. It stayed in about that, you know, gap, plus or minus 1%. So as far as, you know, Clay County is growing, but that can be a question, too, you know, as far as if that senior population increases or decreases disproportionately, that greatly affects your figure. So those are kind of the baseline assumptions. Feel free to jump in anytime and question, but I do have a section at the end. So now, what is the actual impact based on all that assumption? We, in 2022, our collector, O'Reilly, on her annual report, had $510 million roughly of annual property tax revenues to all the taxing jurisdictions from that assessed valuation. So if you apply that threshold, 14% to 20%, and also the 60% of residential real estate value, you get down to essentially $43 million to $61 million is not going to continue to grow. The Hancock Amendment allows you to grow up to 5% a year, so 5% on those figures gives you a band of $2 to $3 million a year, and that would grow 5% every year, essentially, assuming that assessed valuation would continue to grow. At that rate, the averages in non-assessment years are a little lower, but I use 5%. You know, in addition, if there's no growth, or actually lower growth, then of course this wouldn't have impact. And just to kind of check my work and look at peers, and the reason I think it's good Commissioner Lawson presented us to get ahead of this, St. Louis County is already entertaining legislation from a legislator out there to put this into effect immediately upon the governor's signature. They did a fiscal note, and they suggested that it would cost them $14 million in the most recent year. They have an assessed valuation five times the size of Clay County. So if we took 3 million times 5, I think I'm in the ballpark as far as this being a reasonable fiscal impact. Note that that $2 to $3 million a year is for all taxing jurisdictions, okay? It's not for Clay County in particular. And again, keep in mind that if 500 million or 510 were to increase, you know, 5%, you know, that would be how much the increase, less $2 to $3 million would be the net increase in a growing situation. With that, I put together some numbers and charts for you, and as I discussed there, so essentially what you have, what that impact would be, and then the net on the right, with all those assumptions. And so you can basically see not a large change from what would have been collected less the impact. This is the total revenue that's being, that won't grow, not the actual, you can't even see the uncaught growth section. So that's the low end, and the high end, when you get to that 3 million, so 2 to 3 million. Real quickly, so what's the county-specific impact for this body? We have close to a 10-cent levy between our general road and bridge, applying those same parameters, 14% to 20%. You have basically, you know, $450,000 to $680,000 of revenue that the county receives that's not growing, and so that equates to essentially $22,000 to $32,000 a year in property tax revenues that we would not see in growth. We do not know the software cost at this time, and our collector is researching that, as are every collector in Missouri. We also have a commission on the collections for all property tax jurisdictions, and so 1.6% of that 2 to 3 million is $32,000 to $48,000. So all-in impact for the county would be $54,000 to $80,000, should this go into effect of no new growth, not a reduction of our existing revenue levels. So I thought I would put that together for you, just so you're prepared in the event that the governor signs the bill and you want to make a decision on that issue. So I'm happy to take any questions.
So one of the things I was concerned about is, you start looking at all of this, poor Barbara is going to be pulling her hair out, but there's a number of things that we need to do in advance to be prepared for this. Waiting until the governor signs it, and then we are scrambling like crazy people to try to meet that obligation. One of the things I wasn't 1,000% sure about at first was, if it says 2024, does that mean they're going to get it in 2024? Or it doesn't start till the 1st of 2024, and they get it in '25? But the point is, I find out, it can start as soon, you know, right away with that next assessed value. So that means at January or December, when we're getting ready for all of that to happen, we better be ready to give them their credit. I've already gotten not huge numbers of emails, or huge numbers of texts, but some. People saying, oh, am I going to get that? Am I going to get that? So we don't want them to be storming the gate. What I'd like to be able to do is, I'd like to be able to have someone I want to serve on this committee. I would like to set up a committee. I'd like to have a commissioner. I'd like to have the auditor, Barbara, and Tracy, and then whomever else we feel we really need to have on there, and kind of start investigating, what's it going to take to upgrade the software to handle this, number one? Secondly, how do we prove that Mary Jones out there is truly of the right age, owns her home, you know, and all of that? There's got to be something that triggers that. It may mean, and I hate to think about this, but it may mean sending something out to them and letting them fill it out and get it back in, and they've got to get it in by a certain time. Otherwise, we're going to have all these people coming to the commission meeting saying, I need to get the credit, I didn't get it filled out, blah, blah, blah. So I think sitting down with some people that are extremely knowledgeable about it, that we can get this ball rolling, get it started, so we're not waiting to ground zero. So I'd just like to know how the rest of you feel about that.
Commissioner Johnson.
So when I look at my tax bill, most of it's going to the school, school district. How does that impact the school, how would this impact the school district? Any idea?
Yeah, so I think, you know, if I give you an estimate of 2 to 3 million of less growth, it's not, so, you know, it's not a decrease if it's, you know, capping the growth, right? But it's less of an increase, is what it does. And so if you were to say, you know, 2 to 3 million, school districts are roughly 3/4 of that. So that could be, you know, what it would be for less revenue for school districts would be my estimate.
So not overly significant, then?
What's that?
It's not overly significant, then, as far as a loss to, or less. In other words, my concern is, will this just cause them to raise taxes on non-citizens, or non-señors?
Well, so there are, you know, limitations on being able to just raise taxes, right? You have to go to the ballot to do that. If you're, so I mean, if that's the route they want to pursue, you know, certainly they can do that, and the voters can vote on that. But I think, yeah, I mean, it does represent, you know, less than half a percent of, you know, property tax revenues at the bottom of the day.
By the way, Commissioner Johnson, I did talk to three of the school districts at a different meeting, and what I had asked them to do was to be considering this. I would like to know what their numbers look like, and I thought, you know, should the governor sign this in July? I think that's, I can't remember the date exactly, but there is a window before the law takes effect, which would be August 28. And so my recommendation would be, one of the things would be that we discuss with them and get our arms around that. Commissioner Lawson is right, we're going to need to set up a procedure, because if I'm not mistaken, the database for property taxes does not necessarily include age, or am I, I'm trying to, I don't believe it does, which means we might have to set up something of an application process. I mean, this is not just as simple as popping it on there and say, hot dog, here we go. This is going to require some thoughts and some logistics. Again, should the governor sign it? And then finally, I don't think the chances are really slim that there's not going to be a lawsuit related to that. So I think Commissioner Lawson is correct, we need to be prepared, but I don't, I think we need to have expectations of how this issue may unfold. So preparation is wise, but certainly the recognition that there are other forces at work here is also important. With that, Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Couple of my questions have been answered. I guess my only suggestion to the question that was posed, certainly don't see a reason why we can't have an ad hoc committee made up of the folks that you suggested. One question, kind of based on the questions that were asked, though, is whether or not there is an advantage to, or desire to, ask some representative of some of these jurisdictions to be a part of it, because it does strike me that whether something takes effect this year or next year, that growth in revenue, or some of that growth in revenue is going to go away. And so having them at the table to discuss how does all of that work makes some sense to me, unless someone plans to sue someone. Then at that point, no, no, we'll meet you later. But I do think having them at the table, because a decision that we may make will affect them, makes some sense to have them there, too. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you. So I had a lot of thoughts, but I'm going to try to condense them, because I know it's 8:30, and we'll have more opportunities to talk about this. First of all, thank you to Commissioner Lawson for, you know, bringing up the subject. I do agree, it's a big one, and it makes sense to have some kind of working group, you know, preparing for it in some capacity. You know, first of all, in terms of some of the numbers, thank you very much sincerely for preparing them. I would like to point out a couple of things. One, limiting future growth is a de facto cut. I mean, we know that over time, we're going to have population growth and some, hopefully, smaller amount of inflation over time, and so that means their bills are going to go up over time. When we limit how much future growth they're going to receive in terms of revenue, we are cutting. And all of you, I think, know about compound interest, right? And if you do a 5% cut in year one, that might be 2 or 3 million, although even there, I've got some questions, just because if you take 20% of households on 500 million, that's 100 million. And then if you apply a 5% to that, that feels more like 5 million, but I'm sure it's complicated. But the point is, that will compound every year, just like if you look at your property tax bill from 20 or 30 years ago, you know, it hasn't just gone up 5%, right? It's gotten up quite a bit more than that, as have expenses related to those revenues. So over time, if you freeze 20% of 500 million, as that 500 million number continues to go up, as property values continue to go up, even with the 5% Hancock limit, that's going to be way more than 2 or 3 million over time, way more. I mean, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. So it does need to be studied and looked at, and I, like Commissioner Nolte mentioned, you know, getting some numbers from the most impacted jurisdictions, which will be our school districts, I think makes a lot of sense. They've got a lot of good finance people and a number of people that can help put together some numbers, I think, including in the out years. And then to Commissioner Johnson's point about the shifting of the tax burden, I think that is just so important. And when you reduce taxes on a select group of folks without a corresponding cut in expenditures, which we're not envisioning any expenditure cuts here, either at the county or the school districts or the other taxing jurisdictions, what will absolutely happen is that that reduced revenue from the one group will be dispersed and collected from the other group, in this case, non-señors. And I do think it's worth noting that while I wholeheartedly agree that seniors who are living on a fixed income and who have owned their home, you know, the government should not be taxing them out of their home, and we should find paths for them to stay in their home. But a lot of seniors have a lot of money, too. And if you just look at the wealth breakdown in the country, it's just the baby boomer generation alone has over 50% of the nation's wealth. When you add in the generation before them, the silent generation, it's well over 70% just between those two groups. The lowest-income and poorest Americans are young families with kids. So what will happen is, if we do this, and I do think we need to do it, at least some version of it, especially because now that the legislature's acted, if the governor signs it, there's going to be an expectation from our residents that we participate in some fashion. But it should go, it should be noted, I think, that the folks who will be most impacted are going to be everybody else who has to pick up the tax burden, and those tend to be people, frankly, who have less money than the group that we're giving the discount to. So one of the things I've started to look into, just barely, but look forward to talking with council and others, is there some hybrid option? Does the law allow any latitude at all in terms of a hybrid option of who we're freezing taxes for permanently? I personally am a little less inclined to do it just infinitely in terms of the value of the home. You know, I think the spirit of this proposal was for fixed-income seniors to give them a property tax break and let them live out their lives in their home as they absolutely should be able to do. But, you know, when you've got homes also that are worth $1 million, $2 million, $5 million, when you freeze their taxes, you're giving a group that doesn't need it an even bigger tax cut, because when you freeze their bill, compound interest of their even more expensive home means they'll save even more money. So those are my thoughts. I could go on a lot longer, but I'm not going to. But I do think that having some kind of group looking at it makes a lot of sense. But also, we just encourage everybody to sort of take the issue seriously. It's a lot of money, it's going to impact this state for years to come, if the governor signs it, which seems likely to me. Guess we'll find out, but, yeah, thanks.
Couple of things that jump out to me on this is the protocols that I think Commissioner Lawson touched upon, because under Sub 3, it refers to as the primary residence, and that's generally going to be what appears on your driver's license. It is conceivable that you could have someone who has a property, but maybe a senior who owns another piece of property that is more expensive, and they would, in other words, we have to be able to define what that is, and the easiest way to define something like private residency is probably going to be through some kind of a driver's license or other state issued. We may have to make accommodations, because there are some that don't have a driver's license or any other state ID. Another thing that Commissioner Carpenter brought up is latitude. There are two methods essentially that we can approach on this. One is through the referendum process, the other is through action of the commission. If we act as a commission, is there latitude? And if there is, we should at least know what it is and go in as informed as possible. The other option, which would be the referendum process, refers to the last gubernatorial election. I talked to the election board this afternoon. The last election brought in 125,744 voters. That means a successful referendum petition would have to have minimally 6,285 ballpark-y. That is not a very high threshold, as Commissioner Withington will attest. While it's not a walk in the park to gather signatures, the threshold is not very high. The other thing is, there's a certain amount of times, we, you know, so we have to determine, do we want to act? Because if we don't, I would guess that there would be action in the way of a referendum, so I think we have to evaluate what our best way forward is on that. So there are a lot of other things. We've got some, we've got a lot of thinking to do and a lot of contemplation on this issue. Before I go to Commissioner Lawson to make any closing statements on the discussion, is there anyone else who would like to weigh in before we close the discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner, if you'd like to go ahead and close out the discussion.
Yeah. No, I Yeah, no, I, I think, I, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I, I think that there are people out there that are living in multimillion-dollar homes that are over the age, and consequently, those people, yeah, they're going to get a big chunk of it. I, I would like to see that we could be a little more fair in how, how we do that, and, and I'll investigate that more closely, find out, are there age, are there income restrictions or anything of that nature? What latitude do we have as a commission to do those kinds of things and then proceed from that point? I do think that, you know, the schools were the first thing that I thought about. Of course, I, I feel like over my lifetime, I've paid more than enough into the schools, but nevertheless, now I've got grandkids that are that, there, so you still want them to have good schools, the same way your kid had good schools. But I think one of the things that's going to help with, with Clay County being such a high-growth-rate county, I feel like there's going to be a lot of young people of payment age that will come in where your, your senior citizens, they're going to either pass away or they're going to look at the feasibility of selling the property and, you know, going on into a retirement home or something. And so at any rate, I, I don't think we're going to, the schools are going to see quite what you would, might, might look at just at first blush, but I think that is a reality that we do have to consider and we do have to look at very closely. Bottom line is, like I say, the, the demand is going to be made that we get it done. So with the commission approval, I'd like to just set something up, and then I'll send it out to everybody and say, here's what we're looking at, what do y'all think about it, and go from there. So that's, that's the only thing I have.
I might also recommend that we get a read from our, from legal counsel on that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I knew that's probably what you were thinking, but I wanted to enunciate.
Yeah, definitely. We'll put him to work on this, for sure.
With that, I mean, yeah, we, are we going to, are we giving staff instruction on this at this moment, or do we want to?
Yeah, it doesn't do so.
Okay, so we really don't have a, a task to, to assign to staff until we've had some more time to contemplate this. Happily, we do have some time. I want to thank the auditor for providing such an informative PowerPoint for our discussion that is very illuminating. With that, if there's further comments, we will leave our discussion items. That brings us to reports. Mr. Auditor, you're, you're back on deck. Oh, well, no, you're not really, we're just accepting the report. I mean, you can comment if you want to, but I think, given the hour, we're good. And everybody, of course, has that. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just a couple of items. The first is that county offices will be closed on Monday, June 19th, in observance of Juneteenth holiday. And also then, the commission's next business session will be next Wednesday, the 21st, at 3 o'clock here in the chambers.
Brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, if you would like to start off, please. I'm sorry, no comment? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize, I was, I was not looking. There you go, sorry.
All right, I'll be real brief. I just want to say congratulations to Liberty North High School baseball team. They won their back-to-back state championship, first time in school's history. Also, this past Friday, Commissioner Lawson and Commissioner Johnson and I had the privilege of dropping off some resolutions with the Liberty North girls soccer team. They went 22-0. It was the first time that they had won the Class 4 state championship, and it was just the third time in the state's history that a team went undefeated while winning the highest classification for state title since 1985. So congratulations to Liberty North Soccer and Baseball.
Commissioner Lawson, do you have anything you'd like to add? There you go.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I was going to ask about is that after this TIF situation happened, one of the things that I thought about was, you sit on, as a presiding commissioner, and rightfully so, you sit on a lot of boards. I mean, you sit on a lot of boards. I, I think that we're missing the boat, because very often, we don't get to know all of the involvement that you have and all the work that you do. What I'd like to see happen is that, once a month, maybe, at commission meeting, that you kind of give us an overview of, here's what's happening on this board, EDC, or, you know, the TIF, or whomever, whatever boards you've got, that you give us kind of an overview report on it. That way, when something like this pops up, we're already kind of prepared to know what's going to happen, same way with EDC or any of these others. I think that it would be helpful to us. So I'd like you to think about that, and maybe, you know, in July sometime, you'll give us a report on all the boards and, and pertinent things that are happening on those boards, so we can be more knowledgeable and be willing and helpful to, or be willing to help you, you know, with what, whatever issues might have raised their ugly head. So that was the only thing I had.
Okay. Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, as a point of personal privilege, in addition to it being Flag Day, today is my mother's birthday, so I want to wish her a happy birthday. I know this is must-see TV for her, and so I'm sure she's watching now, but happy birthday, Mom.
Commissioner Carpenter, can you top that?
No. Excuse me, I was just going to say, happy birthday to your mom as well.
Commissioner Thompson?
No comments.
Commissioner Johnson? I just want to make one observation. I, earlier this week, I was in, out of town, and I was attending the funeral of a gentleman named Ron Richard. He is unique in Missouri history in that he is the only person who has been both Speaker of the Missouri House and President of the Senate. Quite an achievement. He passed away unfortunately, and his, his services were last night, and then this morning was the funeral. One of the reasons that is of note, I served with him, and I think you might have served while he was in the Senate, Commissioner. But one of the things I think that, that is worth remembering as it applies to Clay County is, he was absolutely necessary for us to get the legislation required to keep the Ford-Clay-Coman plan open. His leadership on economic development issues went across the state, but certainly one of the things that I, I think we all, it would be well to remember is, but for his efforts, the, the plant in Clay-Coman may or may not be working at the level it is working right now. So certainly, I want to certainly pay my respects to my old colleague Ron, and certainly condolences to his family and his legion of friends. With that, unless there's anything further.